Want to call this meeting of the Belton Independent School District Board and Trust to order. Forum of board members is present. This meeting has been duly called and posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. And if you'll join me for the pledge of the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated. Thank you for joining us. All right, Jason, I would bet you made it, right as we called the order. All right, we are here to begin in a workshop session. We've got a number of exciting things on our agenda, but we're going to begin with a proposal that we heard a little bit about previously, but we're going to get the kind of the formal presentation. How are we starting with this? Are we just calling Mike Mars up?
We're just going to have Mike Mars present that this evening.
Come on up. Going to talk about our renovations at Belton High School campus.
Yes, sir. And it won't take a lot of your time. I've got just a few slides to show you and just give you an update on it. Basically, it's still in just the talking stages. And we'll be talking tonight about library renovation to a learning center and then the computer renovations at the high school. Just to give you a little background, your high school library is about sixty-six hundred square feet. The area that we're proposing to renovate is about fifty-four hundred. It'll be basically the main library area. There's a few things that will happen during this. One item is to decrease the book count from about twenty-two thousand to eighty-six hundred. The next items, we're going to add several breakout areas and a conference room. And we want to provide walk-up and sit-down computer resource center spaces. And then, basically trying to remove the interior zone of bookshelves. So you've got a little bit more free space to work with. But the good part of it, the scope of the project, is what we were trying to do is keep your costs down, is basically buying some new computer desks and stations, putting new flooring and paint, a few extra walls, some storefront, and a little electrical modifications. It's relatively minor. I've got a couple of slides to refresh your memory on the library. You've got nice high ceilings. You already have kind of a computer resource setup now. You have desks set up with computers. And this is basically what we're really going to do, except we're just going to kind of open the space up and change out the top of the computer desk that you have. This is looking toward the control desk. This will be looking on the outside. The area where the blinds are will be the area that will have the breakout. So you see the part where the projector screen is. We'll just, at that point, we'll just run some storefront and glass walls across that entire line, making small little rooms that will happen to hit the lighting layout. It hits the air conditioning layout, very inexpensive. And we'll generate several little breakout rooms. You'll still get the view from the windows and the light from the outside, so we haven't cut off any of that. And so the plan looks a little bit like this. So again, the AV storage, everything at the top just stays the same. The control desk stays the same. We take your, the kind of the Aqua tables or kind of walk-up tables, something you might see at a coffee shop when you go up. And there'll be some places to put your computers and...
Higher table.
Higher table, just walk-up.
Have cafeteria.
Yes, sir. And then the red ones are the sit-down areas, the carols that you can sit down and actually have classes. The left side and the right side bookshelves will remain the same. It's full-height bookshelves, and we don't have to change the bookshelves out. So the bottom area where you have the, you have the six rooms, you have a conference room, you have a double breakout room, and the four minor ones are the ones I was just discussing, where you can see through the rooms all the way to the outside through the glass. You can kind of monitor it, but you have a little private areas that you can have little breakout sessions. We've got about a hundred feet of new walls and about eighty feet of glass, and that's about the majority of it, other than just painting and patching and flooring. It's a fairly simple project. Any questions on this one?
I have a question, but it may be more appropriate to Mr. Dubois or Susan Wimmer, who's our collaborator, by the way. In fact, what are we going to do with all books? What's the plan? The books that we're taking off, why?
Well, our current plan is to offer to students, teachers, book reading, telling them.
Distributing.
And then any other organizations that we can find that would want them. I think there's like Books for Africa, there's a few others that we could consider.
Okay. Books that really haven't been in circulation, aren't being used anyway, they're just taking up space?
Extreme books. And I'm following, I would follow the Cruz method of weeding. It's a national weeding method that libraries do to help kind of figure out whom stays who doesn't.
Is it an accurate, since you responded, I'll put you on the spot. Is it fair to say this is, y'all are integrally involved in this planning process and invested in this plan?
Yeah.
See this as a good use of space to engage students?
I believe so, yes.
Great, great. Well, thank you for being involved in that process. Appreciate that.
Susan and Mr. Dubois worked with Michael Mars on developing the plan. Excited about it.
A way to have our students more engaged in using available space. Right now, it's not used maybe as much as we'd like for it to be. Is that right?
Still very institutional feeling, large group, oriented, and that kind of thing. It's a little out for a lot more. There's some soft seating in there, allows us individual, you know, a steady time. They're maybe collaborating a attractive place to be.
Great, great.
And you'll still have about ninety chairs, so when you have your large group sessions, you move all the chairs out and set them up, and you should be able to handle the large groups equally or as well as you have been.
Okay, great.
Let's go to the next one. Same building. We're over to the computer rooms, and we're going to use the same concept there. Again, you've got four computer classrooms that are connected together by an office in the center. That's about forty-four hundred square feet. So what we're proposing is that we take three of the computer rooms away, leaving you one computer space, relocating the office so we can break it out and have additional breakout rooms, the same type of seating for the computer carrels and the walk-ups, and then we have a checkout room for the computer. The scope of work is similar here. It's pretty minor. We're going to take down a few walls, add some new desks and millwork, flooring and paint, add a few windows to the hallway. Right now, there's really no glass. We would recommend that we just kind of open that up so you can see through. And we are going to take the ceiling out and just get as much height as you can because it's kind of long. It'll get to feel like a tunnel if we don't. And we'll put some little cloud areas, drop down if there's some duct work that's unsightly. We would cover it up with some low ceilings in those areas and make it a pretty attractive Minor duct work changes. I've looked through all the mechanical, and the electrical is all there. Everything's easy. So again, both of these prices are probably going to come in at the fifteen dollars to twenty-dollar range per square foot, not counting loose furniture. That would be the construction cost. So fairly, fairly good pricing. Again, this is the four classrooms you have, just typical classroom settings for computers. So we would take the same four classrooms. We would leave one classroom in the upper left, have the same type of setup for the walk-up tables and the sit-down chairs. The office is in the center so it can kind of monitor what's going on. We'd have three access doors to the space, a lot of glass around it so you can see in. The lower right room is your computer checkout space. The electrical room is existing. It would need to stay. And then we added two breakout rooms to the top. And then, again, because of the length and the size of the room, we'd want as much height as we can. So we would do something up in the ceiling and kind of industrial look in that space. I think it'd come out just real nice. And that's it.
Dr. Dubois, you want to speak to this? Is this kind of your idea as I understand it?
Well, it's a concept that we've been discussing for a while about, you know, there's a limit to what you can do physically inside of Belton High School to being institutionalized. And our students are hungry for a post-secondary field. We've been out to look at other spaces and other sites we've visited over the last couple of years, looking at the high school questions. We've seen that some are much farther ahead of us in terms of imparting that post-secondary field on their campuses. So we feel like we've got a lot of kids that, this kind of, this model would give us an opportunity to leverage that space better than it is now. Right now, it's a checkout-only, teacher-come-with-them kind of space. This would be a place where kids could come. Maybe I've got some work to do right there with my dual-credit class at UNHB, but, you know, I'm back on campus, and rather than sit in the commons, I can go into another area where I have access to a printer and that kind of thing. So kind of a come-and-go feel, very much like a junior college campus or something like that. So we're excited about it. If there are some, there's some different ways of working that we'll have to adopt around it, but I think the upgrade to the feel of the campus would be well worth exploring in Champaign, like this.
Correct, correct.
So it would modernize some of the spaces at Belton High School and make them more engaging for students. We started talking about the library while we were at Austin Community College and how we could open that space and really try to attract our students into a place that they could work collaboratively with each other or independently on projects. And then that led to the discussion about the technology spaces. And if I'm correct, we'd also have our computer science program in the classroom that it sits in this digital learning lab. So it gives it a bit of a showcase for that new program that we're implementing next year.
Great. Any questions?
Thanks.
Well, I... Thank you for working on this, and thank you for being creative and resourceful and thinking about how we can repurpose space that will be more engaging to students. I think that's what we're about, and we've seen some success with that at some other campuses where we have breakout spaces. Certainly, New Tech at Wasco has some spaces that are designed that way, so...
And in that particular area, I'm as much excited about the opportunity to remove some solid walls, put some glass in there, and have some pass-through feel and just some openness in the middle of that building. It just, you know, it breaks up the knot, and it makes it a short piece.
Great, great. So what's our timeline on this project? What are we thinking? Who wants to address that?
Phil wants to take that one.
Phil wants to take that one?
Take that one, Phil.
I think it's your pleasure. We think we can go ahead and work that into summer again.
Okay. This is a summer project that we could get done?
We think it's a summer project.
And price it out.
We're anticipating, maybe we're anticipating roughly four weeks, we didn't have someone come in to go to the furniture and get some ideas on the furniture. If there's some idea, I'm hoping to take, get furniture, and so we would have to get priced up and get back to you if we had spent furniture what they were estimating. It's about what we thought it would be. They happen to be too, too, these two more projects right now, similar to this. But they're working on it right now, so that's a very good idea. And the size of this project, maybe we've worked out several times. We're waiting for our main guys out there, four by beach, and she can open.
Great, good. Look forward to bringing this proposal. Thank you again, Mike. Appreciate you coming.
And I would mention that Mike was instrumental in our new safety vestables at Lake Belton Middle School and at the nine, designed those and has been working with us as we think about this building. And we're continuing to think about that as we think about the parking lot project, and we'll bring that forward at another time. But he's done a great job for us.
We've commented several times when you work here, so thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
We appreciate your work on that. Really a great enhancement to our campuses, so...
Thank you.
Okay, well, let's move on to our next item is the proposal. We've been long anticipating the roadmap to 2025. Proposal, we have been talking about this for years, been anticipating...
Three years, in fact.
Anticipating the March meeting where we would get the formal recommendation, what's best for kids, what's best for Belton ISD.
Great. So tonight, I am presenting a proposed plan to address our facility needs for the next decade. We're not asking the board to take any action tonight. We just want to share and discuss with you. And the next month, we'll revisit the proposed plan, and I'll ask you to take action on it at that time. So our vision, am I operating this? I think Rachel's got it for me. Our vision is to prepare every student to excel in tomorrow's world. Are y'all cold?
It's cooling off.
I think they're cold. Can somebody turn that up?
There's a...
So from pre-K to high school, we've been focused, you can't think if you're too cold, can you? The environment's important. We've been focused on achieving our vision through high-quality programs and opportunities for our students. And those opportunities mean that our students aren't just competing in central Texas, they're competing and excelling on a national stage. This slide is, highlights the success of our students in a variety of areas, and a couple to highlight here. Most notable are our two-time state champion teamwork students who placed fourth nationally last year, competing against specialized programs from across the country. Some of those programs, a good number of those students were CTE-only schools, private schools that specialize in this particular area, and our students beat them out. And also notable here is our swim student, Noah Henry, who's already gotten national attention for his athletic talents in swimming. Our commitment to providing our students with the unique and varied learning opportunities is evident in our student success and in our course offerings. We currently offer ninety-nine CTE courses, fifty-seven AP dual-credit courses, twenty-two fine arts and humanities courses, and twenty-one varsity sports teams. Because of the opportunities we offer our students and the quality of our programs, our community is a great place for children to learn and grow. And in fact, every week, I hear of families who are interested in moving here to take advantage of everything that we have to offer our kids. Just recently heard of another family who's coming next year to come to our, to take part in our high school programs. And so that's just one reason why our Big Red community is growing. Our Big Red community consists of the city of Belton, the city of Morgan's Point, and the city of Temple. Along with the unincorporated areas of Bell County, those three municipalities make up the Big Red community. This past year, and we've talked about this before, a significant thing happened in the distribution of our students. And we equalized the number of students between the city of Belton and the city of Temple, where we have approximately, sorry, I can't see that, but approximately about thirty-six hundred, thirty-five seventy-eight, and thirty-five sixty-three? Is that what it says? Thank you. In, between the city of Belton and the city of Temple, and that was significant for us. Also important this year, as traditionally been the case, we've seen how much the community supports our kids. This past year especially, we've been impressed with the number of business partners who've given freely of their time and talents to help our students excel, particularly in the development of workplace skills. And you can see R.K. Bass right in the center of that, working with our construction trades team, students. And because of that support, we've been able to manage, successfully manage our fast growth in the past. And here's what that growth has looked like over the past decade and into the next one. This chart shows the growth of the school district since 2006. You can see that the growth is occurring at all levels, elementary, middle, and high school, and is projected to continue. In fact, we expect to grow another thirty-five hundred students over the next decade. The next slide here shows that our elementaries will reach capacity in about 2019. Our middle schools will reach capacity at about 2020. There's that orange bar, which is middle school. And the last one there is our high school capacity, which will be reached at about 2021, the green bar. Again, all three levels are expected to reach capacity at kind of near the same time in that 2019 to 2021 timeframe. Thus, the need for us to address capacity at all three levels, elementary, middle, and high school. And here's how we've been preparing for when our campuses do reach capacity. As you know, we have been working through this for approximately three years. In fact, in June, this coming June, you will have been engaged in a conversation about our growth for the last three years we've been at it a while. Not only have you participated in workshops on a wide variety of topics on managing our growth, but you've also engaged the community in discussions to gauge their opinions. We held three community listening sessions to discuss our demographers' projections, and a long-range facilities planning committee met from February 2015 to November 2015 to discuss facility planning options. And so tonight, I would like to recommend a long-range facilities plan for your consideration. And that plan calls for the opening of a new elementary school, next slide, in 2019. And then next slide, and the next one. And so we currently own five pieces of property in Belton ISD that are vacant pieces of property to build on. And of those five, four are appropriately sized for an elementary school. They include, in the south, the Hubbard Branch property on FM 436. That's in the city of Belton. The Second Avenue site next to the Ag Barn, which is also in the city of Belton. Our Poison Oak property there in the middle, which sits in the city of Temple, and that's in that fertile zone there. And the North Gate property in the city of Temple in North Belton ISD. And you can see to the west of North Gate is the High Point Elementary School, where we also have property. However, that property would, is right there next to an existing elementary school. The 2025 plan also calls for repurposing of Belton High School Nine, BHS Nine, back to a middle school that would open in the fall of 2021. The school previously served as a fifth and sixth-grade school and then a middle school for grades six through eight. It would provide us with a fourth middle school to address those middle school capacity needs. The plan would allow for two middle schools in the north. That would be North Belton Middle School and Lake Belton Middle School. And then with the repurposing of the nine, that would give us two middle schools in the southern part of the district, South Belton Middle School and the original Belton Middle School. And that would allow us to serve students closest to where they live in the district. And then finally, the plan calls for the opening of a second comprehensive high school in 2021. We've talked about 2021, and it's the significance of that date in the past. However, I think it's worth mentioning again, it is targeted to allow us to phase in the opening of a new, of a second high school. We would start that high school with students in grades nine and ten. And because that would be opened in an odd-numbered year, that would allow us the flexibility to run at what we call an outlaw schedule for UIL purposes, so that we have students participating in a different kind of schedule before we have grades nine through twelve built out, which will be important as we have a smaller population. And currently, next slide, we only own one piece of property that is appropriately sized for our high school, and that property is located on FM 2483 and FM 317, next to High Point Elementary, right there on the west side of Highway 317. So the plan allows us to, we talked a lot about equity last month. This plan allows us to provide equitable opportunities for all of our students. And while we may not start there, the goal is for us to eventually provide identical course offerings at both high school locations. So over time, as a second comprehensive high school grows, the idea is that eventually it would be large enough to have the same course offerings as Belton High School. And then, as far as New Tech goes, as we discussed last month, the vision for is, for New Tech is that it stays online as it is currently as an option for students. However, we would need to change the campus code to be the same as Belton High School, and we would, we'll also have to discuss how grade points are calculated there as they become a part of the Belton High School campus. And the numbers of students at Belton New Tech High School at Wasco would be included in the enrollment of Belton High School. So while they're not physically at Belton High School all day long, those students would be included in that count. So as, they are for UIL purposes now, however, they have a separate campus code, and academically, the accountability ratings are separate, and so there's some things that would be combined into Belton High School. But essentially, the campus would have its own identity and be at a separate location as it is now. So what does all this cost? The real answer is we don't know exact cost at this time. However, we could talk about what we know from our, from the architects who worked with us during the long-range planning process. Huckabee, I think, next slide, please. Huckabee estimated a range of one hundred and forty-five to one hundred and sixty-four million for an elementary school and a second comprehensive high school of twenty-five hundred students. However, those were not hard estimates, and we have the ability to adjust the size of the high school and all of its amenities to meet our budget. And that's something that we would continue to discuss over the course of the next year. And then our financial advisors as well, as of the fall of 2015, identified our debt capacity for a May bond election to range from a hundred and thirty million to a hundred and fifty million. That's a moving target that we will continue to monitor, also as we watch our tax base as it continues to change, and if there are any legislative changes. So that will also be a moving target for us, and we'll continue to monitor that over the next year.
We're going to assume the Supreme Court will get the legislature to do the right thing and provide taxpayer equity.
That would be helpful.
Equal effort for equal...
That would be helpful. So while we don't yet know the precise project costs and the debt capacity is fluctuating, we do know that the long-range plan would require us to increase our INS, our interest in sinking tax rate. We currently sit at twenty-seven cents, and the maximum rate allowed according to state law is fifty cents at the time of bond issuance. So here's a timeline of events for this plan. Upon approval by the board, the district will select architects to build a new elementary school and a high school. The bond election would be called in either February or August of 2017 for a May or November election next year. Sounds kind of close, doesn't it? Next year, May seventeen. And then upon approval by voters, preliminary work, next slide, would start right away for an elementary school and by March of eighteen for a high school. The construction of an elementary school would begin in May of 2018, and that school would open in August of 2019, right on time to meet our capacity needs. And the construction of a high school would begin in August of 2019, with the high school opening in August of 2021. And then Belton High School Nine, BHS Nine, would reopen as a middle school in the fall of 2021. Throughout the process, we've been asking the community to tell us what matters to And this graphic has been an important one for us as we continue to think about the plan. This goes all the way back to the beginning of that planning process in February of 2015, when we asked our planning committee to tell us what they valued about the school district. And we were able to capture that in this document. The larger the word, the more often it occurred from the committee members. And you can see, one thing for sure, is that the community values the school district as being student-centered, and that is something that we want to continue for the future. So focusing on the equity of our programs, continuing to offer, back, go back, please, Rachel. Continuing to offer varied, rich opportunities for our students will allow our students to continue to excel in the future, we believe. And so we're excited about a 2025 plan, next one. And it is the red plan. We talked through all of those planning options, tan, and what were they, maroon, and gray, and yellow, and I don't remember all the colors. But here's the red plan that calls for a new elementary school, repurposing the nine into a middle school, and a new comprehensive high school. And you can see with twenty-five hundred students included in the plan that that would And you can see with 2,500 students included in the plan, that that would give us capacity if we built that large, we, you may choose not to do that, but that would give us capacity for 5,500 high school students, 3,900 middle school students, and about 6,600 elementary students. And you can see where, where our projections are going to be, right there in the middle. And so that is our 2025 plan that we're going to propose to you. Questions?
Let me, before we ask questions, let me just thank you for the effort you and your staff have made, not just in the last couple of months, but over the last three years, of bringing us information. We've, we've generated a lot of questions and said, go find out about, or bring us some information about a variety of different things and options, and I think one of the things that's been very helpful to us is the responsiveness of you and your staff to bring us good information, so that we can make good decisions, so that responsive to the Citizens Advisory Committee, so that answers for their questions were readily accessible. We've made all that information available on our website. Kyle's kept the roadmap to 2025 website updated, and that's been really valuable, and I know a lot of people have spent a lot of time on that. So thank you for what you've done on that. Another thing I would just mention is, it's really fascinating to me how, just to think back, how, how this journey has been and how our thinking collectively, as a board, as a, as a community, but, and my thinking as an individual, has gone through the different options. Three years ago, I thought we'd have the satellites and the mothership and have multiple New Techs all over, and that, when we looked at that, that really wasn't realistic and wasn't a viable option. But, but just thinking through all of the options and how we've kinda gone back and forth through all of those options has been a theme to get to this point. We ask you to bring to us the plan that you think is best for students, ultimately. Certainly, we have to, there's a lot of drivers in this, what we can afford, what, what we think the community wants, but ultimately, what's best for kids is what we need to be about, what we've always been about. And so appreciate your work to bring us a plan, and so at that, having said that, who wants to start with questions or comments?
Well, I have.
I guess, I know one thing we really focused along on are the KATE classes, and I know that we've talked about how that would be handled between the two schools. So with that starting out as a ninth and 10th grade center, are we looking at commuting those kids? Because a lot of those KATE classes start in the ninth grade, so is that what, and I know you don't know that for sure, but with an idea, is that what you're leaning towards?
So what you would, what we would, I suspect we would do is we would pre-register kids like we normally do, and then see what those kids register for and determine which sections we would offer at the new high school, and then we'd have to just make some decisions about how many students want some specialty courses that we might not have enough students to offer on one high school campus. And so we'll have a couple of years there that we're flexible. I know in talking to other districts, they, they did have some staff there with smaller class sizes the first couple of years until they grew into that high school, and that's a very normal part of the process, but that will be dependent on student enrollment and student course selection. Master schedule drives that, we drive that.
Okay.
Good questions.
And then the size, have you made a determination on what size that location, the second high school is gonna be, or what are we gonna build it out to be?
No, we would make that decision with you all after studying the, some options with an architect. So we would propose going out for an RFQ for an architect and then looking at various size options. We'd obviously wanna build for a larger core, perhaps, then we might start with classroom space so that we could expand it if we needed to, but, but it's, it would all depend on the budget, and the board obviously would have a big role in that discussion about what we could afford and what those scenarios might look like. So that would be work that we would complete in the future.
On that note, I, I guess one of the things that I was getting ahead, I guess, was we look at an architect, one of the things that I'm interested in hearing is flexibility of, of facility and how it can be modified or expanded. You know, even as we were talking about earlier, about changing the library and the computer lab into more usable space for students, flexibility of space is real important. Being able to add on to, to change space is gonna be real important, so I would hope that that's a major factor in our choosing an architect, one who would understand that and be prepared to help us look at, at options.
Sure. And remember, the, the ultimate goal would be equity, and we would, we anticipate having 5,000 students by 2029, so we would want to build something that we could add on to if we needed to, and so flexibility's obviously gonna be very important for us as well.
Okay, and then just one more, and that is, according to the numbers and what all we've talked about as far as the funding and everything, and I know the legislature is a, you know, just a hand toss as to what they're gonna do, but i- if you look at your capacity issues, then actually, we're gonna, we're gonna finalize all this in 2021, but in 2025, we're already gonna be at max capacity for elementary again. Are we gonna be able to address that need then, or are we gonna be capped out on our bond funding?
Sure, and that's correct. We're gonna continue to grow as a district, and so this plan only carries us to that capacity for 2025, and we will have to consider that as we make decisions about what kind of debt we wanna incur for a new, for this plan, as well as monitoring that tax base and growth. We know, obviously, our, our tax base is going to continue to grow over time, and so we'll have to watch for that.
Yeah, it's important to note that the projections for the bond capacity that we've been given are based on current, and so if you think out what our bond capacity would be in 2025 or 2024.
That's right.
There's a lot that happens between now and then, so that's important to note. However, having said that, I've kinda said this all the way through, so I'll say it again on, on that note, I hope we don't max out our capacity, or don't move towards some way of maxing it out and not having a capacity available for a number of reasons.
Yeah, that's what would worry me, too, is it, it all is an unknown, and so I know that, but all we have to go on is what we have today.
What we have today, that's right.
And if we look at that, where we are today and where we're gonna be in 2021 with that additional need in 2025, that concerns me a little bit, that we're, we're not gonna be able to keep providing, and, and I mean, we can only do what we can do.
Well, and remember, three years ago, we weren't finished with our 2012 bond program when we started planning for this new bond program. So I suspect as, as fast-growth school district, that's very normal, we'll be working through one while we're starting the next one, and we've done that in the past. However, bond debt capacity's gonna be critical for us as a school district.
Also on that note, just as a reminder, the legislature will go into session in January 2017 and end up allegedly sometime in June. Supreme Court haven't ruled yet, but realistically, when they rule, they'll have that whole session, so a May 2017 is probably not realistic, because it'll still be in process. So I think realistically, we need to be thinking towards November, when we know what, what we have and what, what it's gonna be. And I expect it'll be significantly different. How much different remains, obviously, to be seen. Good, good questions.
Great question.
I know that, that question of elementary capacity, several of us have been, have raised that, you know, that concern of, we're gonna have to continue to add elementary capacity. This is great secondary plan, well past 2025, but for elementary, we're gonna have to add another elementary school somewhere in there, or some elementary capacity somehow.
Yes. Do we have kind of a, a backup plan for a bond that doesn't pass, and what we would do to meet capacity? I just have, I've, in, you know, Tasby, there's always those sessions on people who are out against bonds that don't even live in communities, that just wanna vote no and push for no, and so.
Well, our goal would be to educate the community between now, with, beginning now, we're already making presentations to homeowners associations and about the growth of the school district, but we'll continue to do that, especially given a plan that we could go out and communicate, that's important to us to have that adopted plan from the board, so that we can do that. However, should a plan not pass, then we would have to use the facilities that we have, add portables where appropriate, and make do until, and, or adjust, adjust a plan until we, we can get what we need for our kids.
It's critically important that we adopt and present a plan that our community can support for that very reason, because the alternatives are not good for kids.
So a lot of interest in this plan from the community, and we get a lot of requests to make presentations about the growth of the school district in the future, so having a plan would be really important to us.
What else?
One question in the plan, I noticed that we still, there was some talk of our aging facilities of Southwest.
Miller Heights.
Miller Heights, Leon Heights, and we know just from our background that we're gonna be pushing our debt capacity with the new schools. So how do we fund any part of replacement? I know there's nothing in this plan, but, I mean, another 10 years, you're looking at 70-year-old structures.
Yeah, we, we worked closely with an architect about a year and a half ago to develop a facilities maintenance plan that identifies systems that need to be replaced or repaired in the next few years, and so we're, part of our budgeting process every year is to identify those systems and to, to make the renovations as we go, and that's always gonna be a challenge for us as we continue to grow and, and take care of our needs and our facilities, but we'll have to budget for a lot of those things every year, and that, and you've seen us do that recently with projects, taking care of our facilities such as VEX and the nine, providing upgrades there. So maintenance of our facilities will be really important, and it'll, and it will take some, a significant investment to continue to do that.
But we know all buildings have a lifespan.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, our buildings are in really good shape, and we'll have to maintain them the best we can, but we, you know, as we talked about in the long-range facilities planning process, we really don't have the capacity to take off facilities. So, you know, we had an idea to combine two of our smaller elementary campuses and build a newer, more efficient campus, but we don't have the bond debt capacity to do that, so we are going to have to use the facilities that we have and keep them updated.
Eventually, or at some point, though, I think Jason's point is valid, eventually that's gonna have to happen. It may not happen in the next 10-year plan, at least this plan, but eventually, there is gonna have to be some serious looking at that. But again, we went through that process. I had hoped we would be able to address that, too, but the needs are greater than the resources available, and we have to prioritize in that scene. That was the process we've been through the last.
And that's not an uncommon phenomenon for fast-growth school district. Fast-growth school districts face bond debt capacity issues and with the, the old with the new and the, the fast growth of the school district.
You know, just, just a thought, as we think ahead, we combine the two issues. One, we're gonna need additional elementary capacity, and two, we've got some older facilities that enrollment is not as, our capacity is not as high as some of our newer campuses, so maybe those combined together in a, going forward beyond this plan to meet those, both of those.
We just don't see ourselves being able to do it as a part of this particular plan.
Right, right. Well, we have to do what we can do.
Because of the high school. The high school's a significant investment.
I'm gonna, I've, I've said this before, so I'll, just to be consistent, I'll say it again, I still believe that we should not look at a smaller, the new high school should be smaller. We've always known that it's inevitable that we're gonna have a second high school. The question's always been when, and we've put it off every time we've done planning for the last 20 years. If this is the time to do that, still, to me, it makes sense to say, eventually, we're gonna have two very large high schools. We, we can see that down the road, but could we, for this plan at least, and in the shorter term, have a, utilize the capacity of Belton High School more efficiently, continue to utilize it efficiently, and have a smaller 4A-style high school? Equity, I know, is an issue, we've talked all that, that, but it's affordability, one, and it's also choice. I, I think there, the affordability is obviously a key issue, but the, the choice issue is very clear. People will choose. They choose New Tech at Wasco, they choose Belton High School, they will choose, like Belton High School, the new high school option, different size, so I think having options is a good, a good way to go.
And I think as we work with an architect, we can look at some of those options and bring those back to you all to consider. Again, course, core areas will be important for us, because we will want core areas that can serve us for a long time in a second comprehensive high school, but classroom space, we can certainly look at smaller, smaller size to, to open with.
Okay, and one other comment I'll make, we've said this, repeated this, this phrase many times, I hope that as we move forward, we can continue to think about how we multiply the Big Red Community, not divide the Big Red Community. And this is an opportunity for us to expand our influence, give new children. Sue actually spoke eloquently about that several months ago. I don't remember exactly how he said it, so I won't use as good of words, but the point being, we can multiply giving students opportunities and families opportunities to be part of the Big Red Community, rather than thinking of this as dividing Belton High School. It's a new opportunity and a new, a new world ahead of us.
Lots of opportunities for kids.
Well, I guess the, you know, we, we've been getting to this point and coming to this point, we, we kinda heard this last month, and, and again, kind of now in a very formal proposal. At this point, our task will be to listen and to get the feedback that we get from folks that we talk to, and then come back with whatever questions or comments and, and move forward. You know, the reality, though, is this plan still has a great deal of flexibility in it.
It does.
For example, size of the school, of the high school, location of the, of the elementary school at least. And so I think those are things that we're gonna wanna be sensitive to, our community's needs, our student needs, financial obligations, and all that going forward.
Absolutely.
But let me just end again with a thank you for walking us through the process. This has been a, a lot of work, and a lot of people have done a lot of work.
But we thank you for asking all the right questions and, and guiding us along the way. It's been, it's been a good process.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions or comments before we move on? Okay, well, it is 5:48. We're gathering a large contingent of students to recognize outside, but I think we've told many of them 6 o'clock, so we're gonna take a break at this point, reconvene back in here at 6 o'clock to recognize our students. We have a, a lot of students to recognize. There you go, all right, good job. Okay, next up, National Merit Scholarship finalist.
I'm really pleased to introduce Jasmine Ping, who is our National Merit Scholarship finalist. Jasmine represents about 15,000 National Merit Scholarship finalists nationwide, but that's 15,000 out of 1.5 million students who took the qualifying test.
Amazing. This is no small thing. This is huge. To be a finalist, you met all the requirements and then sent all your stuff in, and they were dazzled and impressed, and so now the money starts flowing in, right? Great. Hopefully, we know it will, it's gonna be awesome. Congratulations, pretty proud of you. This is a big deal, and everybody should aspire to. This is ultimate academic remarkable stuff. We're really proud of you. Okay. Don't get much bigger academic awards than that. Powerlifting state qualifiers and medalists, front row, come on up.
Between the girls and the boys meets, we have a dozen qualifiers. We'll start with the girls. Ariana Garcia, Dana Young, Sidney Andrews, Destiny Batista, sorry.
Jason's gonna need some help. Go slower. Girls, you're gonna have to help Mr. Carruthers, Camden, they got their certificates, coaches, you may need to help us, too.
Where'd you get your stuff?
And then y'all come back up here and get up on the podium. Maybe guys behind you.
Okay, Ariana Garcia, Dana Young, Sidney Andrews, Destiny Batista, Maggie Dolan, Aubrey Hardry, Hardy, sorry, Mariah Martinez, and Juliana Rodriguez, all qualified for the state meet, which was held earlier this month, and Ariana placed fifth in the 105-pound weight class.
Wait, hang on, Kyle, let's give them a, a second to get organized. I don't wanna miss, this is important stuff, but.
No, I'm gonna say.
Voice in the background.
Okay, now, Kyle, tell, tell us about them while they're listening and listening. Okay. Now, Kyle, tell us about them while they're listening and focusing.
Ariana placed fifth in the 105-pound weight class.
Yeah, there you go.
And Dana placed fifth in the 132-pound weight class.
There you go.
Then, on the boys' side, the state meet hasn't been held yet. It'll be held on April 2nd, but Jevon Chambers, Buddy Curry, Braden Martinez, and Abe Villarreal have qualified for that meet.
Awesome, guys. Proud of you.
And our head coaches for the girls' team are Jason Moffin and for the boys' team, Eric Bosch.
There we go, guys. Good coach. All right. Take lots of pictures. Everybody smiled? Did y'all flex? All right. Did y'all flex? I couldn't see what you were doing. Did y'all give us a good flex picture? Come on. That was a great opportunity. Show us, show us your muscles. All right. HOSA Future Health Professional State Qualifier.
Next month, Kyle Winters is headed to the HOSA Spring Leadership Conference in Galveston, where he will compete in pharmacology. He placed third in the district competition. And Ashley Kuzora is the HOSA sponsor at BHS, and Cecilia Easley also teaches pharmacy tech classes at the high school.
Congratulations, Kyle. Good deal, man. Heading to the coast for competition. Go get a state championship for us, Kyle. There you go. All right, next up, History Day State Qualifiers. We've got a lot of state qualifiers. Have y'all noticed the theme here?
We had a great group of students competing at the Heart of Texas Regional History Day, and almost as many students moving on to the state competition in Austin next month. From BHS, Madeline Shappett, Haley Peace, and Olivia Holden took first place in their group exhibit category. From New Tech, Dylan Allen and Harrison Coffey placed second in the documentary category. Ariel Van Cleef, Luke Ames, Morgan Whitstone, and John Day placed second in the group exhibit category. And Emily Miller took second place in the individual exhibit category. And while they aren't advancing to the state competition, we also want to recognize two New Tech students who won the very prestigious Baylor Law School Award for the group exhibit, and those students are Morgan Foote and Elijah Menriquez.
That's a big deal.
Pamela Rodriguez teaches AP World History at Belton High School, and Tim Potts is the US History Facilitator at New Tech.
Great. Congratulations, guys. Come on up. Y'all back up. Back up. Back up.
And Matt also teaches world history at New Tech and helped with the team's preparation.
There you go. Get in there. Let's get some pictures. Okay, y'all are going to have to scrunch together, get a picture. This is our history experts. Congratulations. Proud of y'all. Good job, guys. All right. Next up, Visual Arts Scholastic Event State Qualifier. There's a theme.
Absolutely. Continuing our state qualifiers theme, of the more than two dozen entries submitted by Belton ISD students that received the highest rating possible at the Regional Visual Arts Scholastic Event, we have two students who have qualified and are advancing to state. Abigail Dixon is an Art IV student who's advancing for CATNAP, which you see on the screen. And Riley Hembry is an Art III student who's advancing for More Than Just a Dream, which you see on the screen now.
Congratulations.
And at Belton High School, Marilyn Seals teaches Art IV and Emily Simmerath teaches Art III.
Congratulations. Lovely state qualifiers. All right. Girls' Basketball, bi-district champions. They're all out in the hallway, I think, so somebody call them in. We need those bi-district champions.
For the first time in 12 years, the girls' basketball team qualified for the playoffs.
There you go. Come on up to the front.
And they did so, racking up a 23- and 11 record. And then in the first round, on a nail-biter, claimed this thrilling come-from-behind win to become bi-district champions.
Okay, y'all are going to have to figure out how to get stretched in the two lines. There's a step behind you. Okay, so, so we do have, did you do all your stuff?
Yes.
Okay. So we do have a certificate, which is really nice, but kind of a better trophy, so I'm going to put that down. But more importantly, it's been 12 years since a banner got hung in Tiger Gym. So we wanted to give these to you in the banner to go up to Tiger Gym. Oh, I'm getting this picture. We're, okay, you're going to have to scrunch in one. We thought it'd be fun to have a big banner-raising ceremony, but it's hard to get people into the gym and, you know. So this is cool. Congratulations. Y'all represented Belton so well. We're so proud of you. I know that none of y'all were in school the last time we got to raise a Lady Tiger Massacre Hall banner. And some of you weren't even born the last time. One playoff game, so that's a really big deal. We're really proud of you and great things are coming. Well done, Coach. Proud of you. Really proud of you. Oh, that was fun. I enjoyed that. There were a lot of picture cameras out there, so thank you for doing. Okay, next up, the Bell County Youth Fair Award winners.
We have a veritable army of students that go to compete in the youth fair each year and a significant roster that brought home top honors this year. We'd like to start tonight by recognizing Madison Gartman, who had the champion black OPB breeding swine and the reserve champion breeding swine.
Congratulations, Madison. And she went to all kinds of other fairs and did all kinds of great things.
We did. And actually, I'm going to skip ahead just a little bit from what I had planned to point out, that Madison also won first in class for her champion middleweight Reserve Hampshire hog at the San Antonio Stock Show and Rodeo, which earned her a $10,000 college scholarship. Shaylen Jamogen took first and champion in oil and acrylic painting. Kaitlyn Ledbetter was first in Class 1 Market Goats, first in Class 3 Market Goats, and reserve champion for lightweight market goats. Emily O'Braiden was the reserve champion for haired sheep. Kaitlyn Quigley was the reserve champion for white OPB market swine and first in middleweight white OPB market swine. Audrey Rawl was the reserve champion in middleweight market goats and first in Class 6 Market Goats. Luke Reed was first in Class 9 Market Goats and third in Class 8 Market Goats. Denny Rockwood was first and grand champion in dresses and jumpers. And Shania Ward was the second reserve champion in animal wildlife black and white photography. Our sponsors for the FFA program are Wade Gartman, Tammy Gibbert, Mitchell Hill, Brad Hobbs, and Ashley Tingue.
Thank you. Y'all got to come up here. Sponsors, come up unless you're taking pictures here. Y'all scrunch on in. All right. How many of y'all had an animal at the Belton FFA Ag Barn? Haylen did. There you go. Good job. Proud of y'all. Come on up, guys. Takes great sponsorship. These sponsors spend enormous amounts of time helping these students be successful, and we are very proud of our program and their accomplishments. Don't know what they're doing out there, so somebody will just have to tell us when they're done. Great job, guys. Great job. We're proud of you. Thank you. Thank you for what you do. Thank you, sponsors, for all the efforts you make. We are very fortunate to have great sponsors, great facilities, great kids winning awards. All right, next up is the Temple Daily Telegram Spelling Bee Champions.
Last month, we swept first and second place in the Bell County Spelling Bee, sponsored by the Temple Daily Telegram. Jackson Belibragic, a sixth grader at Lake Belton Middle School, took first place. And Madeline Bradshaw, a seventh grader at North Belton Middle School, took second place.
And second place? Go ahead, say that again. We clapped over.
Madeline Bradshaw took second place in the Spelling Bee.
Awesome. These are our Lake Belton and North Belton students. We are, more pictures, don't be shy. Y'all hang in there. There's plenty of time. We'll take lots of pictures. We are so proud of y'all and so glad that you swept the awards and brought home the trophies and got some money too, huh, guys? Good stuff. Proud of you. Congratulations. Okay, next up, Rotary Educator of the Month from the Temple Rotary Club.
Good evening. For our Temple Rotary Educator of the Month, we are pleased to recognize Dana Taylor for her outstanding service in Belton ISD. Dana, if you'll come on up. And Dana teaches functional academics for grades 3 to 5 at Chisholm Trail Elementary School, and she's in her 12th year of education and her third year in Belton ISD. Ms. Taylor creates a learning environment that challenges her students to meet their goals through a rewarding, positive learning experience. This year, her students have participated in a token economy where they get to use their classroom money for completing tasks. They pay rent for their lockers. They can spend their money in the classroom store, and this has created a deep commitment and ownership on her students' part to, and motivated them for their classroom effort. Elizabeth McMertry, principal at Chisholm Trail, states, Ms. Taylor is a solutions thinker. When she sees her students need a different approach to learning, she finds creative ways to teach valuable skills by providing students an experience that connects their learning to real life. So congratulations, Dana.
Congratulations, Dana. We're proud of you and appreciate what you're doing for our kids. And you know you get to have lunch with Dr. Kincanon, coming up soon, with your principal too. Y'all get to take a...
Doug's welcome as well.
Doug can even come. Wow, okay. How nice. That'll be fun. We appreciate the Temple Rotary Club sponsoring that and providing us an opportunity to recognize another of our great educators. Okay, the Texas School Public Relations Association, TESPRA, Star Awards.
I love this because I get to brag on my department and the great work that my teams produce this year. So every year, the Texas School Public Relations Association gives out Star Awards in gold, silver, and bronze to recognize great work from the previous school year. And this year, Communication Specialist Kristen Gordon won a pile of the awards, four Silver Star Awards for three photos and a video, and two Gold Awards for videos, including the one shown at the Public Schools Week Luncheon last year and her documentary on the history of West Belton and Harris High Schools. And then also, Kath...
Come on up. We want to, we want to take your picture. Somebody's going to take your picture.
And also Catherine Atmar, who's not able to be with us tonight.
We're going to let you be in that picture too, Kyle. Hang on, hang on, Amanda. Go ahead and talk about, talk about Kat, and then we'll take your picture.
She won an award for her newspaper ad on Meet the Tigers.
And we're proud and we'll make sure she gets some recognition too. I'll bet Catherine could Photoshop herself into that picture. That'd be awesome. Listen, I want to just, Kyle's getting to brag on his department, but you and your department do a great job of helping spread the great, the good news of the great things that are happening in our school district about our students. And we need not take that for granted. We certainly need to recognize, and we're thankful for TESPRA recognizing this. Glad you've got some recognition from your professional organization, but thank you for what you do to help promote Belton ISD and our students and staff. We appreciate your work. Congratulations. It's a big deal. Okay, finally, we have the Big Red Community Partners, who aren't able to be with us tonight, but we still want to recognize them and go ahead and tell us about them, and we'll get their awards to them, but we want to thank them publicly.
Absolutely. Well, Scott Ivey has done a great job relaunching Mock Trial at Belton High School. Last year was the first year for the program. This is the second year with a tremendous group of new talent this year. But their success is really driven by the support that our community gives them, and that's what it means to live in the Big Red community. It's a community that supports our students. And so we are recognizing Attorneys Jeremy Mastin and Adam Sorhels, who aided the team by helping them conceptualize their case, develop their arguments, and critically served as mentors to students interested in pursuing a career in the law and talking about their own experiences.
Well, special thanks to them. And again, what a great opportunity for our students to connect with the real world and learn and do well. And hopefully, they will have a future career. Thank you, Kyle. Appreciate you covering all this. I also wanted to just mention, and this is relevant to Kyle, I want to thank you and your staff and so many others who had a part in our Texas Public Schools Week Luncheon recently. What a great event. We had a big crowd representing, all, 200 folks representing a wide variety of aspects of our community came together to hear some of the good news and hear from some of our students and see some of the great things happening and just celebrate really what's great about our schools. And so thank you, Kyle, and thank you to everybody else who had a role in that. That was an important event and a really good one. And I also want to mention, we'll recognize them at a future board meeting, but our Belton High School Theater Department, one-act play, is the district champion. Friday, they won district and are advancing on with Tribute is next on our agenda. Is there anyone, I didn't see that anybody had signed up, anyone wishing to address the board? Hearing no, takers. We'll go to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda any board member wants pulled for discussion? Hearing none. Let me identify those items. We have the minutes of the February 22, 2016, regular meeting, the unaudited financial report for the month ending February 29, 2016. We have several budget amendments. First, the attendance incentives reclassification, Fund 199, Function 23 to 11, to reclassify $4,154. We have the school bus lease purchase amendment, Fund 134. This is to add $729,076 of both revenue and expenditure, as we approved last month to do the lease purchase. We have, third, the mid-year review and expenditure amendment, Fund 199. This is to increase our revenue and expenditure budget by $2,323,802 due to increased ADA over our budget. We usually budget somewhat conservatively, but we're currently standing at 100 or projected to be 100 over our budgeted number, so that'll allow us to do some things. Some of that money needs to be dedicated to particular items in the amendment, and some of it will go to our capital budget. Fourth is other earnings for curriculum writing reclassification, Fund 199, Function 11 to 13. This is to reclassify $37,844. Fifth, other earnings for secondary curriculum reclassification, Fund 199, Function 11. This is to reclassify $4,950. Oh, that goes from Function 11 to 13. Sixth is the mid-year salary reclassification, Fund 199. This is to... to reclassify $564,042, as indicated. Seventh, we have a mid-year revenue and expenditures amendment, Fund 511. This is to increase...this shows an increase of revenue of $9,275,324 and expenditure of $9,090,274. Eighth is the campus enrollment incentive reclassification, Fund 199, is to reclassify $5,600. Ninth is the final insurance proceeds amendment, Fund 199. This is the revenue proceeds, the increase of revenue by $722,689.52, as we anticipated from those insurance proceeds. And then tenth is the technology lease purchase amendment, Fund 199. This is to fund what we...again, what we approved previously for the technology purchase, $1,766,600 in revenue and expenditure. We have three expenditures, over $50,000 requiring board approval, of $90,630.75 to mentoring minds for the STAR resources. That comes from IMA funds. Second, we have $165,351.12 for the Belton New Tech High School at Wasco Computers. That is...comes from IMA and Title I funds. And $85,607.41 for Renaissance Learning, STAR Early Literacy, and STAR Reading. That comes from the CNI budget. We have the gifts, grants, and requests of less than $1,000, just for review. That's just for informational purposes, does not need board approval. But we do have other revenues of at least $1,000, but less than $10,000 requiring board approval. That includes $1,436 from Temple Lodge 138 to Purtle Elementary for iPads for functional academics. Thank you to them for that donation. We have $8,000 from Lakewood PTA for field trips, $1,580 from Band...Belton Band Boosters for the band trip, and $5,000 from the High Point PTA for technology. We have eight bid, supply equipment and service bids to approve. First, the renewal of classroom instructional supplies and equipment, RFP 1304913082, to approve the vendor list effective 4/1/16 through March 31st, 2017. Second is the renewal of classroom instruction supplies and equipment supplemental one, RFP 1412913138, to approve the vendor list effective April 1st, 2016 through March 31st, 2017. Third is the renewal of athletic equipment and supplies, RFP 1412803135, to approve the vendor list effective April 1st, 2016 through March 31st, 2017, with an option to renew for two additional years, one year at a time. Fourth is the request for proposal for athletic equipment and supplies supplemental one, RFP 1601803123, to approve the vendor list effective April 1st, 2016, March 31st, 2017, with option to renew for two additional years, one year at a time. Fifth is the request for proposal for classroom instructional supplies and equipment supplemental two, RFP 1601743131, approve the vendor list effective April 1st, 2016 through March 31st, 2017. Sixth is the request for proposal for transportation parts and supplies supplemental two, RFP 1602906128, approve the vendor list effective April 1st, 2016 through February 28th, 2017, with option to renew for one additional year. I meant to ask why that was only February, but I'll let that go. Request for proposal for network electronics, RFP 1512915124, awarded to NetSync Network Solutions. And request for proposal for enterprise wireless system, RFP 1512915125, also to NetSync Network Solutions. Thank you for bearing with me on that. We have the instructional materials allotment and teak certification for 2016-17. We have the TASB Media Honor Roll nominations. We are nominating each year. Board has the opportunity to nominate some media representatives to the Texas Association of School Boards' Media Honor Roll. And so, we are recognizing or submitting the following individuals for that recognition, representing the Belton Journal: Tony Adams, who's sports editor; David Tuma, publisher of the Belton Journal; Arissa Shaw, reporter for KCN HD-TV; Nia Harden, reporter for KWTX-TV News 10; and Crystal Dominguez, education reporter for the Temple Daily Telegram. We are very appreciative of their efforts to provide fair and good coverage of our school district. We also have the certification of unopposed candidates and order of cancellation for the Saturday, May 7th, 2016 trustee election for Areas 3 and 5, and the special election to fill the unexpired term for Area 2. This allows Leo Camden for Area 2, Sue Jordan for Area 3, and Mike Cowan for Area 5 to be elected without an election because they were unopposed. Congratulations and thank you to you all for your service. We have the technology lease purchase resolution and declaration of official intent. Note that the proposed interest rate for the lease is approximately 1.29%, with four annual payments of $452,838.88. Devices will be scheduled to arrive over the summer. First payment on the lease will be made September 15th, 2016. And finally, the extension of the interlocal agreement with Colleen ISD for graduation image magnification. That is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve? Have a motion from Ms. D.B. and a second from Ms. Winkler. All in favor of the motion, raise a hand. Thank you very much. While we're on that election, and again, I want to thank you all. Jeff Norwood is here in our audience, and Ron Bailey, I don't know if...is Ron is here also? Jeff and...Jeff is somewhere, was here, and Ron is here. They have filed for Area 1 and will be in the May 7th election. So, thank you for joining us and being with us tonight. Okay, next up, superintendent's report.
Yes, I have just a few short items tonight. Skills USA Competition. We have 32 students who will be competing at the state Skills USA competition this week, beginning Thursday and running through the weekend. And that event will be in Corpus Christi, so we're really excited about that. We have students competing in teamwork, carpentry, residential wiring, chapter business procedures, photography, audio/video production, television production, forensic science, screen printing technology, food and beverage service, culinary arts quiz bowl, and automotive projects. We're really excited this year to have so many students advance to state and picking up in some new areas. And we're really hopeful that some of them will advance to the national competition in Louisville, Kentucky this summer. So, we'll look forward to hearing those results this weekend. Students in Grades 4, 5, 7, and 8 will begin taking their STAR and EOC tests this week. Starting tomorrow...on tomorrow, we have 4th and 7th grade students taking writing. English 1 students are taking the English 1 EOC. Students in Grades 5 and 8 are taking their mathematics test. On Wednesday, 5th and 8th graders are taking reading. On Thursday, students in English 2 are taking EOC. And any of our students who are absent or missing their tests will have through Friday to take a makeup exam. That's first round of testing. The next round of STAR and EOC occurs the week of May the 9th. And as we've done for the last many years, students who don't perform satisfactorily on the 5th or 8th grade reading and math assessments get additional opportunities. And that next opportunity is May the 9th through the 10th, so they typically turn those results around pretty quickly so we can do some remediation. And as a reminder, EOC exams are a requirement for graduation. Those are high-stakes tests for our students. Next, just a quick note, since we're talking about the high school roof tonight, I just wanted to mention, you already approved the amendment for the budget for the final payment of the 2014 hailstorm. That amendment was $722,689.52 that you just approved. But I wanted to point out that the total amount that we received from that one hailstorm event in 2014 was $3,259,466.19. That was a significant event. Yes, it was. Phil has been tenacious about working with TASB and our insurance adjusters there to make sure that we settle that claim and get everything that we're doing. So, I want to say thank you to Phil for that. And that hailstorm has allowed us to take care of some roofs that we need to take care of, so...
And some HVAC.
And some HVAC. We had a significant amount of HVAC equipment that was damaged, and we've been able to take care of that as well.
Really is amazing that that storm...that was a significant storm, but it's amazing how much damage it did. It was very centralized, localized, smarter than high school.
Right there. Yeah, 3.2 million.
That doesn't count all the cars out in the parking lots that weren't ours.
It doesn't. And then finally, tonight, I wanted to mention that specialized public financing, our financial advisors have identified about $6.5 million of debt from the 2010 Series Bond for refunding. And so, next month, Jennifer will be here to discuss that with you. And we're going to ask you, as we've done in the past, to pass a resolution to allow us some parameters to be able to sell those bonds and get some pricing on those. So, we're looking forward to saving some more money for our taxpayers in refinancing.
Got a good history of that. We'd save quite a bit of money.
It'll be the eighth time, I think, that we've been able to do that. So, I'm really excited. And that's all I have.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Dr. Kincanon? Okay, well, we're gonna...is Todd...are you starting, or is Todd...who's doing?
I think Coach Shipley's gonna be on.
Todd, you're up. Or is Coach Shipley coming first? Coach Shipley, you want to come up here and talk to us about a really significant hire? We...it's not specifically listed on our agenda, but it is really significant for us to hire a new volleyball coach at Belton High School.
It is. As you know, most of y'all know, Stacy Myers has retired. And so, Coach Brenda Gomez and Dr. Dubois and I have been searching for a volleyball coach and talked to a lot of applicants, a lot of really good applicants. I'm gonna wait till they all get in here because I don't want to miss this.
I believe our volleyball team is present, and we're glad. Come on in. Great. That's what we want. Wonderful.
So, we had a lot of good applicants. We interviewed quite a few candidates. And when Crystal Broadbeck came in, first of all, the nice thing is, we probably wouldn't even have known about her if it wasn't for Dr. Dubois, who worked with her previously at Grape Creek. She was his head volleyball coach there, started the program, and had great success there. So, we were just kind of talking, you know, you know, we need an impact person. He said, "I got her." And so, that's how we found out about her, thankfully. And so, Dr. Dubois gave her as good a recommendation as you could give anybody. I kind of took that with a grain of salt. Because he'd worked with you before, and, you know, I just was trying to be objective. So, I checked her other references. And I can tell you this, in my 16, 17 years of being an athletic director, an athletic administrator, I've never had anybody say the things that the people that she's worked for and with have said about a coach. Just disciplines with dignity was huge to me, amazing with parents, very, very humble. So many things went on and on and on. And I just...I'd hang up, call the neck, and I go, "This has got to be a joke." They have candid camera, so...because it was exactly the same thing that Chris was saying. But anyway, we're so thrilled that she has agreed to be our head volleyball coach. She's a graduate of Hardin Simmons. She grew up in Wimberly, which is somewhat of a volleyball town. So, she played at Hardin Simmons. She worked there. She was the head...she was the head volleyball coach at a college, at Hardin Simmons, for four years. And so, she brings really a great deal of experience, not only being a head coach in high school, but being a head coach in college, you know, helping the girls that may want to go to the next level, or at least understanding what it takes to do that. But I know from talking to her, that's not her goal. Her goal is not to get kids to the next level. Her goal is to help these kids grow and become the young ladies that they're destined to be. And we talked about that, and we even shed some tears, I think, during...it was kind of embarrassing. I checked my man card on that. But she just resonated so much with what I believe in, you know? And so, she walked out, and Coach Gomez and I looked at each other and said, "That's the one. That's the one our girls need. That's exactly the one that we need." So, I want to introduce to you, and we are asking for your consideration of hiring Coach Broadbeck...Crystal for our...I hate to call her Coach Broadbeck because I feel like she's a friend already. But with great honor, we'd like to recommend the hiring of Crystal Broadbeck to be the head volleyball coach at Belton High School. So, would you...would you like to say anything?
I would love to. Thank you. I'll keep this very short, but I just want to say I'm so thankful to be here. And I feel like from the moment that I set foot on campus, it felt like home. And so, I appreciate very much the open and warm welcome that I received. And I also appreciate that I could possibly be working with such wonderful people. And from the very get-go, these stellar folks were telling me about all of the students here and the community here, and how supportive they are, and how wonderful the kids are here. And so, it would be an honor and a privilege to work here. Thank you.
Well, I want to just thank you for taking the challenge to move to Belton. We have high expectations here, and our girls have done great things in our volleyball program. But we want to go to the next level. We want to continue to provide opportunities for them. We're all about providing opportunities for our students to excel. And with those recommendations, that certainly means you're the right person to take us to that next level and give them those opportunities. So, thank you for giving them the opportunities. Thanks for taking this opportunity upon yourself. And thank you for being here tonight to meet us, to meet with us. Not everybody does that, and we appreciate that opportunity to meet you. So, we'll get you hooked up with some red, and go Tigers. That's real important around here. We're all about red. So... Great. Well, I'll tell you what, before we act formally, thank you all for coming tonight, by the way. Our student athletes are here in large numbers to be supportive of our new coach. And it says a lot about our program, says a lot about you. And we're excited about what the future holds for Belton Tiger volleyball. So, thank you. I want to thank you. As soon as we...we're gonna let Todd Schiller come up and give us the rest of our personnel actions, and then we'll take an official vote. And then we're gonna let all of our student athletes go down the hall and have a little meet and greet and time to visit. But Todd, go ahead and tell us what else we need to know.
Yeah, we're also...tonight, we're recommending a Director of Accountability, Don Schiller. And she has a bachelor's degree from Texas A&amp;M University, master's degree from Concordia University, has been with the district for a number of years, done a lot of curriculum writing, been an assistant principal, a grant coordinator with Belton New Tech, and is currently a curriculum facilitator with us now.
And this will be for next year?
This would be for the next school year, yes, sir.
For going to affect at the end of this fiscal year, I guess. Not really fiscal year. That's not right.
Next, with the new contract. With the new contract. In addition, we're also...we're recommending a pre-cow teacher.
Don's hiding in the back. Thank you, Don, for taking on yet another new role, new opportunity, right? She is spelling, for those of you that don't know, she's going to be taking care of many of the responsibilities that Robert Meyer's been taking care of for many years. So, we'll hear from you as you bring us reports, right? Great.
We're also recommending tonight a pre-cow teacher and a computer science teacher. You've heard us talk about the CTE program, the four-year program that we're implementing at the beginning of next year. And we found a good individual, James Alaman, who Amanda had...has found, and they've accepted the position. Has about 18...
Are they here? Anybody here?
I do not think he's here.
Okay.
Has 18 years doing this type of work with computers, science, and teaching. So, we're anxious to get working with him as well.
Great. That's exciting. We approved this new program, and the big question was, can we find somebody to fill that role? And you were able to do that. Got a good one, from what it sounds like. Great. Any other questions?
23 open positions right now for next year. This is that season.
For next year.
Yeah, for next year.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve? One motion for Ms. Jordan. Second, Mr. Ken, any other comments or questions? All in favor of the motion of hiring these great folks to take care of our kids, raise a hand. That passes. Thank you, Coach. Congratulations. We appreciate you being here. All right. Girls, y'all go meet and greet and have a good time and look forward to that discipline with dignity. That's exciting times. Okay, next up, I'm not sure, Phil or Susan Diamico? Okay, next up, I'm not sure, Phil or Susan Diamico, who's up for the food truck? That's a big program, just for the record. There's a lot of kids out there. That's great. All right, well, you came and brought us a proposal and talked to us about food trucks and we got a really neat, exciting proposal up and so now you're here to say you can really blow it off, huh?
Yes, sir.
Really, that's why we're here this evening. We would like to, does anyone have any questions before we go in?
Can I eat there?
Yeah.
Yes, you can.
When do we get the sample?
We can do that.
I'm not.
You're not. What we brought you last month, there was a little alteration to, that we needed to have done on the food truck. On the serving side, we're gonna have reach-through coolers to where the folks on the ground will be able to reach in and get some cold items right into the side of the bus. And then, of course, they'll step up to receive their meal. And so what you see is the way the, and it's the bottom one there, the side layout. There's a cooler right underneath the window there. We'll stalk it from the inside, they'll be able to reach from the outside.
You keep somebody from just walking up and taking what they want.
Well, right in front of the window, the pay window, and so, I mean, same thing we have right now in the cafeteria. As they're moving over, they won't have received their food yet and they'll pick it up and then we'll process as we go through there. That's the way it is on paper. A lot of this is what's on paper. And so, but we have been working on it a long time and we believe we have it pretty well nailed down. We started probably December of 2014, throwing the idea out and beginning with it. And so we're very excited about it. We're ready to get out there and have our food truck constructed. We believe the final product inside is gonna look like this and that's what we're gonna send to them. And we hope to get that done and get it headed your way. So if we may, tonight, what we'd like to do is approve ATX Food Truck Builder of Austin as the vendor to renovate a 72-passenger bus into a food truck and authorize the superintendent to negotiate and execute contract with ATX Food Truck Builders.
Is there a motion to approve? We had a lengthy presentation. For those of you that weren't with us, what a wonderful presentation, a lot of history, a lot of research, a lot of investigation into this. And basically, one of the conclusions that stood out to me was the cost of this is the cost of adding a regular serving line. And so, and your projections are that this is going to increase student use of food service.
Participation.
Participation and utilization. So it's really gonna pay for itself. Another opportunity to engage students is that.
Sorry about that. What is your estimated recoup time, do you think?
We don't know because we don't, the thing that we are not certain of is how many kids we will add. We don't know if we will have kids that usually ate in the cafeteria that just want something different or if we will have, how many new customers we will have. So that would be the question because we already have lines still running concurrently in the cafeteria. So we really don't know yet.
We saw a good increase this year. It showed a significant increase based on the renovations in the cafeteria and making it more attractive to the students. Seemed to have worked, so this is another opportunity. Would be interesting to get a follow-up on, did it work?
We do manage that every week. We do look at the meal served at each meal time in every location, every week, Susan and I go over that. And so we'll be able to see fairly rapidly, you know, the percentage that we've increased usership of the school nutrition program. And so, and it'll be fairly easy to see because the food truck won't be in one place and so we'll only have to actually focus our attention at that one place each day.
Right.
And so one day it'll be at a middle school, the next day a middle school. We'll do all three middle schools and the high school and that will be guideline food, just as it is in cafeterias, it'll be reversible meals, it'll be everything just like it is inside, it'll be probably a different menu than most of them. Susan has developed a very aggressive menu for food truck food that meets the guidelines. And they're working diligently on recipes and that sort of thing. And then in the fifth day, we intend on having this in a location where the public can have non-guideline food truck food. And we have an idea of where that location is going to be and then we'll serve your standard food truck food and then we can integrate the food truck into catering side of school nutrition as well. And then, of course, working with City of Belton, City of Temple, and more to go on, you know, permitting and all that, or whatever, locate food trucks. So we have grand plans. We've looked at a lot of things. At least one of us will be in Waco this weekend at the big food truck rally that's going on in Waco this weekend to get an idea, you know, that last few things. We look at it probably differently when we go to a food truck today than when we went a while back. We're listening to sound systems and because we're installing a sound system, it has something you'll hear music and all that good stuff, make it jazzy and cute on the outside as they approach it. And we're looking right now at the wrap that'll go around it and we're fine tuning that. And so we're not done yet, but we're getting awfully close. We're getting down to fine tuning the recipes. And so, and we tasted some of that the other day and we brought it in here, tried to get a blind taste test in the breakout room, the superintendent's breakout room in there and just put a blind piece of bait, "What do you think?" And people are just writing all sorts of good stuff about it, so well, this is what we're gonna serve.
Next time you do that, feel free to invite the board.
Could you do it really quick?
Yes. You want to add anything?
Oh, I just think the kids are gonna be really excited about this. I, there was a presentation at the Temple Rotary Club last week about food trucks and now food truck festivals have started in the city of Temple and the big thing, there's been a lot of interest and they've run out of food every time with all the trucks that they've had there because there's so much interest in it. So I think that there'll be a lot of enthusiasm around it by our kids. And I think Waco's experienced similar things. I haven't been to a food truck festival yet, but I'm really excited about having one in the district.
It's a cool thing to do.
It's very cool. I think it would be fun, be a fun endeavor for us.
We've identified the bus that we're converting. It's one of our old buses, is that?
We have the option for the price of it, about the same price. We can either use one of our old ones, if we have one that we can take offline, we're gonna need to get it to begin the renovation process right away. If we're unable to do that, we've located another source at the same price for roughly the same miles, but.
Probably not as well maintained, though.
Well, that's what I would like to believe and so that's why I would like to use ours. But on the other hand, we want to be certain that we, you know, have a yellow school bus and get it all wrapped up and get renovated to where it's in their serving. You can see that that's a regular commercial kitchen and that we're gonna be able to do a lot of things in there. So we intend on using every square inch of state to steal a little bit of what's in there.
I want to add one more thing about the project. The Belton Educational Enrichment Foundation has set aside $5,000 for a district-wide project. Last year they worked, they helped us with the Ag Barn Gate. This year they're interested in the food truck and very excited about it and will be, Susan will be presenting it to their board next week so that they can take a vote on that and consider it, but I see them supporting it wholeheartedly. And so we should have a beef logo in that wrap on there somewhere to show their support of it.
I want that community partnership too. Again, thank you for the work, Susan, Phil, you all have done a whole lot of work on this. Appreciate the commitment to go to the food rally, food truck rallies. That's the extra mile. Okay, so any other questions or is there a motion to approve? Who wants to make that motion? A motion from Mr. Cannon, second from Ms. Winkler. Any other comments, questions? All in favor of the motion, raise a hand. Pass unanimously, please. Thank you again for bringing this to us, bringing us along in the journey for this. We're looking forward to seeing this implemented and we've got food testers that are ready to go, anytime. Thank you.
We've been tested.
All right, we appreciate it. Okay, next item. Phil, you're gonna talk to us about ranking proposals for the Belton High School Roof Project.
Absolutely. At the regular scheduled meeting in October 2015, the board approved a competitive sealed proposals for the delivery of Belton High School Roof Project A. And we discussed at that time, we would have a Project A, a Project B, and a Project C. This is for the Project A. We went ahead and put that on the street, it's posted on 21st of January. It was evaluated on March 4th and we evaluated the basic bid itself plus alternate number one. And we would like to recommend this evening that we accept the bid of Empire Roofing to put, to undertake Belton High School Roofing Project A and to begin this summer and to be completed by this, the end of this summer. And so if anyone has any questions, we have Ms. John Cannon here this evening. That would be helpful in answering any specific questions on the roof itself, but this is the section of the roof, the darker, the darker area there, that we intend on doing this summer. And we'll start it immediately after the kids get out of school. We'll probably pre-position whatever we can. We've already spoken with the contractor, pre-position whatever we can, be prepared to get on that roof, we'll keep an eye on what's going on in the school and have that thing buttoned up and ready to go when school starts in the fall.
Well, we had a really good project with the nine.
Yes, we did.
Doing Empire Roofing.
Very good project.
So that gives us good expectations.
Good background with them.
It'll be a similar project.
That's correct.
Similar outcomes, positive outcomes.
That's correct.
John, a question to you, thank you for coming tonight. Question I'd have to you, you've told us about this, we've gotten presentations, we've kind of been leading up to this for several months, but has anything changed from what you told us before? The alternate is a little bit different, but how does that fit?
Alternate number one, it's actually not, it is roofing related in that it is in a roofing project, but you can see down the center of the roof sections there, E1, E2, and I believe E3. Yeah, so. Originally with the, with the building, there were some fairly, fairly large rooftop package units that were up there. The original curb is almost the size of your table there. They've been retrofitted with a new rooftop unit that's about a third of the size, so there's a large sheet metal cap that's on there. Alternate one, rather than reusing that cap and flashing up to that point, we're actually going to provide a new curb that fits the units that is there. There's a little bit of structural steelwork that happens on the underside of the deck and the deck repair, but that's gonna give you a more of a long-term solution. I know one of those caps is blown off in the past and we were gonna rebuild those through the base bid, the original numbers, but it's a better long-term solution for you, so we put that in the project.
And the alternate came in with reasonable bid.
The alternate came in at a very reasonable price, so we recommend that you guys take it.
So from what you've told us before when you've come, what we're, where we're at is right on track?
It's right on track with where it needs to be.
I'd like to add just one thing. We did some value engineering on that and John was instrumental in assisting us with that. We went back to the bidder and we asked for them to do some value engineering that had no effect on quality. And once they did that, then they sent that back to us and to John and we evaluated what they brought back to us and we saved another $29,000 and change on that. And basically that amounted to not using red flashing metal on the flat part of the roof using galvanized, so you didn't have painted metal up there. Things like that, that was in the original specs.
Most you can't see it.
But they were, well, they were able to do it and it didn't affect quality at all. And so each one of the items that we accepted had no effect on quality and so we did accept that. So that was a deduct of $29,000 and some change as well. So we had the basic bid, we added $22,000 for the alternate one, we deducted $29,000 for the value engineering and that's how we ended up at the final price with the contractor.
And this is within what you told us to expect, too?
Yes, sir. I believe it's still a good set of money, but I think it's $95,000 off of the estimate.
Does anybody else have any other questions? Well, we need a motion to approve the ranking of proposals for the Belton High School Roof Project A as presented. Approve the expenditure, amend the budget, and authorize the superintendent to negotiate and execute a contract for the project on behalf of the district with the highest ranking proposal. Is there a motion to approve? Motion from Mr. Cannon, second from Mr. Caruthers. Any other questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, raise a hand. Thank you, appreciate it. John, thank you again for being here, appreciate you working on that. Phil, thank you for inviting that happen. This has been one that, again, has been on our list and we've been working towards, so it's, it's good to see it come to fruition and we'll look forward to the great, to the same good, positive outcomes we had with previous projects.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And if another hailstorm happens to blow through this spring, we'll take advantage of that, too, right?
That's right.
Okay, good deal. What's next? I gotta catch up. Council Angela, talk to us about policy update 104.
I noticed the 103 and the first sentence sitting over there.
Update 104.
It is 104, though. 104, it's the second set of changes from the last legislative session. And this time, in, we're, on the worksheet that we've been providing to you, we've added a new column. Each administrator who's responsible for the changes or the area that's being changed is going to add some information about whether or not that change is gonna change our existing practice. So we thought that'd be helpful for y'all to see because sometimes, most of the time, the changes are after we've already incorporated.
It's kind of old news.
Right. We're usually ahead of things, but we thought it would be helpful for you to see if it was a change, what it, how it would be different in practice. So we're still working on that and hopefully we'll have that to you early next week.
There's a number of local policies, obviously the legal policies, we just adopt. We don't have any, any say in those, but there's a number of local policies, but nothing's sounding really significant.
No. I don't, I don't think that we'll propose any changes to what Tasby's recommending.
Okay, we'll have that for review this month and put that on the agenda for next month. Thank you, Angela, appreciate your work on that. Next item on our agenda, you should have at your place a ballot. This is electing the Board of Directors for the Education Service Center, Region 12. We don't take one vote as a board, we have seven votes. So if you'll make your vote, put your ballot up there, we'll forward them on to Service Center. It is interesting that these are not positions that represent us, but they're on the board of the Service Center, which we're within that, so it is relevant. They ask us to do it. Okay. Issues or concerns for future agenda administrative reports. Jason, you got anything? Leo? Sue? Penny? Mike?
No, sir.
Amanda? Okay, make your, just a couple of things to make sure on your agenda. On April 4th, the Chamber of Commerce sponsors the Meat Belt for military families twice a year. We, our staff worked very hard on, I want to encourage you to make that if you can. It's at Harris. Starts at 6:00 on the 4th. Our next regular meeting is scheduled for April 18th. And of course, there's a number of other activities that are on the calendar and all. Yes?
Oh, never mind, probably.
Okay. Anything else? Did I miss anything? All right, at this time, it is 7:02. The board will go into closed session to discuss personnel and consultation with attorney. We will not be taking any action when we return, so you're more than welcome to come and watch us adjourn. We will return to open session to adjourn, but we won't be taking any action. Thank you for joining us this evening. It is 8:14. We will reconvene in open session. There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you for joining us.